May I call the meeting of the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education to order on May 22, 2025? In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the newspaper and on the district website on January 8, 2025. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building in the schools and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on May 7, 2025: The Daily Record, The Star Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Tap into Parsippany, Patch, and the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per bylaw 168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and video on the Go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. May we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Barrios?
Here.
Mr. DeVito?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mr. Raye?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Here.
Mrs. Kogan?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now ready for our student committee reports. Mrs. Gonzalez?
Good evening. I'm Emma Gonzalez from Parsippany High School, and I'm so excited to share this week's past events with you. Our school is so excited for Memorial Day weekend. We are especially excited with the extra break days. Just as a reminder, school is closed tomorrow, May 23rd, May 26th, and May 27th, next Monday and Tuesday. Luckily for the student council, we get the opportunity to go to Six Flags for our spring convention. We cannot wait to discuss all of our future endeavors and goals for the state student council next year. And we get the rest of the day to enjoy all of the Six Flags rides and food places. The PHS student council is so excited. Yesterday was the PHS Spring Band Concert. We are so proud of all of our players and are so excited to hear their solos at the Solo and Small Ensemble Concert. Come support our PHS band on June 3 at 7:00 p.m. This year, Red Stock is on May 31st from 12 to 3:00 p.m. with food, music, games, and gender booths. This year, local vendors include School of Rock, Mathnasium, the Parsippany Public Library, and so many more amazing local communities. Make sure to come out and support our students, local community, and businesses. Right after the band Solo and Small Ensemble Concert, there is the Senior Awards Night on June 4. Our school is so proud of our seniors, and we cannot wait to see how far they've come and appreciate their accomplishments. Additionally, they have their senior prom on June 5. All of our seniors are so excited. Just a reminder for rising seniors and their parents, the information has been posted for senior parking and lunch off-campus eligibility. Make sure you attend one of the meeting dates listed on the weekly newsletter and submit one of the signed off-campus contracts. Anyone that wants to be considered for the Parsippany High School Hall of Fame must submit their nomination to Parsippany High School by August 31, 2025. This special award must be seen through the dedication and service to Parsippany High School. Just a reminder for future graduating students, a new graduation requirement is necessary. You must complete the FAFSA or NJ Alternative Financial Aid application in order to receive a diploma. These forms are essential to a student's future and a great way to ensure that every student has the opportunity and knowledge to receive financial aid. For our Parsippany High School sports, our Parsippany High School baseball team had a 7-4 loss on Monday, the 19th, against Madison, but they have a game tomorrow at Mawa at 4:15. We wish them the best of luck. Our girls softball team had a game against Jefferson on Tuesday with a 5-4 win. Additionally, they have a game tomorrow against Morris Tech at 10:00 a.m. We know that they're going to do amazing. Our girls lacrosse team had a game yesterday against Clinton with a 16-4 loss, but they have a game today at Hoboken at 4:30 p.m., and we wish them the best of luck. With the end of the school year coming up so fast, our sports teams are finishing up their seasons and preparing for the fall season of sports. With all the prep, we know that they'll do amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I know you're not Tanish, but go ahead, tell us who you are and give us your report.
Good evening. My name is Shivani Sri, and I'm currently a freshman at Parsippany Hills High School. I'm currently running for the Board of Education liaison, filling in for Tanish. Let's get started with this month's Viking Report, beginning with some student council updates. Starting off with some essential student council updates, the student council is currently working on next year's election for the Student Council Executive Board and Class Office. The candidates have been decided and have been released to the general public on our official Instagram page. The student council will release campaign videos by the end of next week on our Instagram page for students to watch. We will hold voting on June 2. The student council is currently sorting senior letters as well. Moving on to PHHS events and updates, here's the highlights from events and initiatives that are happening at Par Hills. Graduation will be held on Friday, June 20 at 9:30 a.m. at Par Hills Turf Field. Each graduate will receive four white tickets for outdoors and two blue tickets in case of an indoor ceremony. All six tickets are valid for the outdoor ceremony. We are excited to celebrate the class of 2025. The spring concert features a curricular band, sorry, the curricular bands and choirs of chorus, and will be held on May 20 at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. Come out to support our talented student musicians. The marching band and color guard held a car wash on May 17 from 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Parsippany Hills Club. All proceeds were used to support the program, and it costs $5 to wash each car. The PHHS Career Fair will be held May 29 during unit lunch on the outdoor patio, weather permitting. Students will have the opportunity to explore job opportunities and speak with local business representatives. And make sure to dress professionally and bring a resume. Now, I will be handing it off to Sanjana to finish off the rest of the report. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sanjana, and I'm also a freshman running for the Board of Ed Liaison. So continuing on with events, so graduation bouquets and class of 2025 T-search featuring graduate names are available for preorder through the commencementgroup.com/parsipneyhills. Orders will be available for pickup at graduation. Customer graduation loss signs can be ordered at phhs.givbacks.com. The deadline to order is May 30. Late orders will not be accepted. Yearbooks are still on sale for $90. Online purchases close at the end of May. Juniors interested in senior open campus or senior parking must attend one Share the Keys program session. Upcoming options include June 11 at 6:00 p.m. at Parsippany High School, June 18 at 6:00 p.m. at Parsippany High School, and August 4 at 11:00 a.m. at Parsippany Hills High School. And for the Parsippany Hills athletic updates, everyone who wants to stay updated on Viking sport scores, achievements, and events should follow the Par Hills Sports Instagram page at Par Hills Athletics. Softball defeated Parsippany High 9-8 to win the Mayor's Cup. Congratulations to Coach Olson and the team. Baseball earned a 4-2 win over Parsippany High to secure the Mayor's Cup. Great job to Coach Bachelor and the team. The following are the upcoming Vikings games. Varsity basketball will take on Pennacock High School today away at 4:00 p.m. Varsity softball took on Mendham at 4:00 p.m. today at home. And lastly, varsity boys lacrosse face Newton High School today at 6:00 p.m. at home. And that's the month's PHHS report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from board members?
I do. Are you guys competing against each other for liaison?
We are.
You are?
You both did a great job.
Yes.
I don't recall ever having quote-unquote an audition prior to the election, so this is kind of cool. Well, the good news is the school has two outstanding choices. The bad news is only one person's gonna be the liaison, but you guys did great tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Absolutely.
I just wanted to point out that I'm sitting over here to hear her AP capstone presentation about like three weeks ago?
Yeah, a couple weeks ago.
And she did a unbelievable job.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to tell them about it a little bit, do you want?
Okay.
She works so hard and did a great job.
Sure.
You didn't know this was gonna happen, though.
No.
So I did my AP capstone presentation on the socioeconomic, how different socioeconomic statuses would perceive a hypothetical implemented sugar tax at Parsippany High School. So how, I basically measured how different students from different income brackets would take it if it was implemented and see how, if it would be a positive result for Parsippany High School. And I did conclude that people in the lower socioeconomic status did see it a lot differently than people in the higher. And they saw it more dramatically than people in the higher socioeconomic status, but people in the higher are more related to how much they were drinking it rather than their income bracket. So there was like a mixture. That's just a brief recap of the presentation, yeah.
She did a great job.
Thank you so much.
She was messing around.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, students.
Have a nice night.
You too. And I just wanted to recognize, we have Council Vice President Neglia in the room. Thank you for your attendance, Mr. Neglia. We are up to correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come before the board?
Yes, there is.
Oh, you're gonna read?
Sure. You wanna? No?
Okay.
Just, just a brief statement. I informed the board a little earlier this evening. Dear Dr. Sutter, President Kogan, members of the board, after a great deal of thought, I've made the difficult decision to step down from my position on the Board of Education effective at the end of our July 24, 2025 meeting. Serving on the board for over 15 years has been one of the most meaningful and rewarding experiences of my life. It's been a true honor to work on behalf of our students, staff, and families and be part of shaping the direction of our schools and our community. I've had the privilege of working alongside so many dedicated, thoughtful, and passionate board members and administrators throughout the years. I'm proud of what we've accomplished together, and I'll always be grateful for the friendships and memories I've made along the way. This decision comes as I look to better balance my professional responsibilities and my family life. As hard as it is to say goodbye to this role, I know it's the right time for me to do so. I'll continue to cheer the board on in the district from the sidelines, and I truly wish all of you the very best and the important work ahead. So, you know, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Chaffo. I'm sure we will have more to say in July.
Yes.
Okay, so the Board of Ed officially acknowledges your resignation.
Thank you.
And we are up to unfinished business. Is there anything? Okay, committee reports? Should we want to start? Let's see. Human Resources, Mrs. Mayer?
I'm gonna do Human Resources.
That's the first one that came up on mine. Which one do you want to do?
Human Resources met on May 19. Present were myself, Mrs. Abraham, Dr. Wright, and Mr. Ricker, I believe. Transportation updates. Our head bus driver recently resigned as he's the, as the only 12-month driver on staff. He'd like to continue working as a 10-month driver without the responsibilities associated with the 12-month position. We're currently looking to update the job description before we post for a new head driver. We're also in the process of creating a new job description for a stipend position as a bus mechanic. An in-house person with the correct certifications would allow us to save money instead of having some, on small repairs and certifications that we currently send out. We anticipate having both job descriptions ready for review before the June 5 meeting. We currently have school nurse positions open at Rockaway Meadow and Lake Par. We currently have RNs assigned to other buildings that we can use to fill those roles at each school. We have a total of 23 teaching positions open this spring. Five of them have been filled. This includes eight unexpected resignations for various reasons since the end of April. Supervisors and building administrators are currently conducting interviews and demo lessons.
Do we have any questions on the report? All right. Do you want to give your liaison report, too, and then we'll move on?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. Let me go back. Hold on, I gotta find that paper. Okay. The Third Annual Nancy Helberg Memorial Recognition Celebration was held at Mount Olive High School on May 7. I type up a summary for you all to read. I don't have to read it all to you, you know. Laura Dunn was the assemblywoman who was there, and she was very supportive of the evening. Total funds raised was significant. It's probably, it's the highest we've ever been able to get. Sheriff Gannon was there, and he presented to the four eighth graders, and they each got $500. 12th grade recipients, 11 awarded, including Amelia Marata from Parsippany. She was sponsored by Maschio's Food Service, and she received 1,500. Other recipients there were awarded between 1,000 and 1,500. It went up that way. There were 12 12th grade scholarships. There were four different sponsors, five recipients, the amounts ranging from 500 to 1,000. County College of Morris had offered tuition assistance to three students who'll be attending in the fall, attending in the fall, which is a great thing. After that was over, we had our normal meeting, presentation of board member, board member milestones, and recognition of individual certificates, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and I'll let Mrs. Kogan take care of that. Recognition of outgoing executive committee members, and election and oath of office for the new executive committee members. Only three districts submitted for the Irene Lefay Excellence in Boardmanship Award. The winner was Katie Bartnik from Mine Hill. And then there was a really lovely presentation to Charlene Peterson. You know, this was her last, I mean, she was, she was done, but she was there anyhow, and it was just lovely how they honored her, and people had really nice things to say. You know, she'd been a UNICEF rep for 12 years, and that's a pretty long time. So that was just really a nice thing to show the appreciation for her. Anybody have questions on that? Okay. Next thing I have is the delegate assembly. Again, I tried to kind of consolidate. There was a lot talked about. Dr. Purnell has been rehired. He got a new contract for five years. The first resolution is to make inter, the esports, interscholastic sports that they get recognized and they get letters for. And, you know, I don't have to read this to you, but it was overwhelmingly, you know, yes, everybody thought that was a great thing to do because not everybody goes out and does that. This gave another avenue for people. The second one, oh, that was the one that took the longest to discuss. It was addressing the shortage of nurses. The proposal was to have language modifying the certifications for the nurse. And they, because they were eliminating the requirements of holding a bachelor's degree and completing a New Jersey deal we approved college curriculum. And instead, they had to do three, complete three classes related to school-specific operations. There was a very lengthy discussion. A nurse, a school nurse was there, and the fear was that not having the full training was watering down the capabilities of the nurse, okay? So that was, that was really very controversial. And the vote was taken, and the recommendations that the New Jersey School Board is very vague. You know, they believe that all necessary and appropriate steps should be taken, but it goes short of saying anything, just like with, well, I'll go on to the next one. And the vote was taken, and it was very close. It passed by one vote, which was pretty, pretty tight. Resolution four was, oh, anybody have questions about two? Resolution four was by Kiddy Ti, my mouth is not working today. Yeah, that one. It's, attendance regulations should include state excuse absences for students who are completing steps necessary to enter the Skilled Trades Professional Union. And we do have that for students going into the military. They have that. So that, that really wasn't anything that was really, you know, hammered over. But again, the recommendation was so vague, and I even got up and said, it just says the students should be permitted a limited number. And I said, well, why can't you just say they can be permitted a number, be permitted state-excused absences? By putting that limited number, what, what is that limited number? But they didn't think that was anything. Both of, all of them, the language that they adopted was very vague, and I was told that it's easier to lobby when they have vague language. That passed 96%. And then they swore in the new New Jersey School Boards Association officers, and the meeting was adjourned at 11:00.
So all of these are recommendations?
Right.
It still really has to go to the state to decide on these, right? Before we actually have anything to discuss here?
Right. Right. And I brought the delegate assembly handbook if anybody wanted to look at it. I mean, I just gave you a brief overview because, you know, every other word would have made you crazy, but it was very interesting, you know, to hear people's perspectives.
Just obvious question. I'm thinking handbook might have it in there. There's, there's a 1, 2, and 4. I guess they polled 3.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the other, yeah, because I was surprised at that, too. They, they get a lot, and some they just don't bother to bring forward to the.
It's just funny that they had it that close to bringing it forward in the last minute.
But they're all in here. Those were the main ones. I think the one that drew the most discussion was about the nurses. So we'll see how that shakes down. And that's the report.
Thank you. Mr. Barrios, policy?
Policy met on May 19, 2025. In attendance, myself, Mrs. Chappelle, Ms. Kogan, Dr. Mulrooney, and Ms. Benos. On the, on the, or on the notes here, there were a series of policies that we went through, had a comprehensive review of all these policies. And because of the amount of policies that were involved and some of the changes, we thought it was a better idea not to push it for this meeting and hold it until the next board meeting for the first read. So we'll give everybody an opportunity to sit back and digest some of these. Some changes were regulation changes, so kind of your standard fare, but other changes were add-ons by the administration. And plagiarism policy has revised to academic dishonesty. That was P 5701. So there's, it was a few things that we went through. Please take the time to review them, and that's my report.
Do you have any questions?
Can I just clarify? Sorry.
Go ahead, Mrs. DeVito.
Clarify first, that's fine.
Okay. We can put those, we can post those this week, right? So people can, excellent, thank you.
So are any, just to, just ballpark here, so are any of these policies, we're gonna move them out to the next meeting, first reading, then second reading in June 17, I assume? Is there any of them coming under, not coming under compliance that we probably may or may not have? I assume not, but I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, we definitely talked about that, and it's nothing that was time-sensitive, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Just as a little thing, Mrs. Abraham pointed out that the date is March. I'll have to switch it to May.
All right, Mr. Chaffo, I believe you have a few committee reports?
I do, I do. Critical issues did meet on May 14. Present were Mrs. Abraham, Mrs. Chappelle, Mrs. Kogan, and myself. Mrs. Benos was there, too, but, you were there, right? You're not, not on our list, Joanie. Critical issues, met to review the Board of Education 2025 self-evaluation. The compilation of the self-evaluation was distributed to the Board of Education on May 22. Additionally, we are required to do a self-evaluation, and we utilize the New Jersey School Board's model to accomplish this. Each board member entered their individual feedback and received a copy of the completed report on May 22. The self-evaluation is used to collect data on how members see their roles and the role of the board. It helps to assess where we stand, what challenges we face as a board, and how to better fulfill the obligations of serving of a board member. The Critical Issues Committee will continue to compile a summary of the results of the six standards and release that information to the board shortly. Questions on Critical Issues? No. Oh, yeah, sir. Today is May 22, isn't it? Yeah.
I know. We can get it.
Yeah, we, okay. Got it. I did recognize that I was reading it, but I just kept going with it. Yeah. The ad hoc development committee did meet on May 14. Present were Mrs. Mayer, Mr. Raye, Mrs. Kogan, Mrs. Benos, Mrs. Tedesco, myself. The committee reviewed and discussed the questions from board members that were submitted regarding the memorandum of understanding for pilot revenue sharing that we received from Mayor Barrio. The questions were submitted to our special counsel, Mr. Simon, for review at our next ad hoc committee on May 28. Questions on that? Oh, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Chaffo, for running the last meeting. I was absent, so I forgot to say thank you. It looked like it was a pretty quick meeting, so you did a good job. We have a question, Mr. Raye.
No, not a question. I just have a liaison report.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. I did not ask if anybody else had.
Last week, it was on the 15th, we had the PAL board meeting report. So I just want to mention to anyone who happens to be interested is that there are a number of summer camps coming up that are sponsored by the PAL, including advanced basketball training, advanced volleyball, summer art, summer basketball basics, summer flag football, summer indoor soccer, lacrosse, pickleball, and there is also a summer STEM program, which is exactly what, what we think about with STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, a program to encourage interest in STEM. So just want to make anyone aware who might be listening, who has an interest in signing up.
Thank you. Are there any other liaison reports, Mrs. Chappelle?
So on May 15, the ESC met. There's really nothing. We did the, we did the superintendent review and just touched on a couple of other things to wrap up the end of the year, but nothing else to highlight.
All right, thank you. Any questions for that?
Yes.
Do you have a liaison?
I don't have a liaison, but I just wanted to mention the Parsippany Education Foundation golf outing. I know, I just wanted to introduce it if you wanted to say anything.
No, I mean, it was, the Parsippany Education Foundation had their annual fundraiser on May 13, which was the golf outing. There was several board members in attendance and administrators in attendance, and it was, they had a really good fundraiser. So thank you all for showing up. That's good.
Thank you.
To that end, I think, didn't they exceed their goal from last year?
They had more golfers this year.
More golfers, and I think they exceeded their fundraising goal, yeah.
I think like 93 golfers.
Very well-intended, so.
93 golfers?
Yeah, not 90, something golfers.
90, 90 plus, right?
Yeah, it was really.
Fantastic dinner and raffles. Everybody was very excited.
Good. All right, so that's our committee and liaison reports. So now we are up to approval of minutes for the regular and executive session of May 6, 2025. Can I have a motion, please? Mrs. Abraham, second. Mrs. Mayer, roll call. Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Raye?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Abstain. And we are now up to the superintendent's bulletin, number 19. Dr. Sutter?
Thank you, President Kogan. Good evening, everyone. As I explained at our last meeting, May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The sheer esteem of a legacy of leadership and resilience honors the contributions and service of AAPI leaders who have paved the way for future generations by affecting positive change in their communities and the world. As such, the district has planned lessons, activities, and has provided our teachers with many resources to acknowledge and celebrate AAPI leaders. I will be attending the Morris County Association of School Administrators' valedictorian and soliditorian recognition dinner on June 3 at the Hannover Manor. The purpose of the evening is to honor the two top students at PHHS and PHS, along with the rest of the valedictorian and soliditorians in Morris County high schools. I'm pleased to share with you that Parsippany Troy Hills School District has been officially selected one of the NAMA, NMA Foundation's Best Communities for Music Education for 2025. The prestigious national distinction is awarded to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement in providing music access and education to all students. This recognition places the Parsippany Troy Hills Township School District among the top 4% to 5% of school districts nationwide for music education excellence. Key factors that are considered during the selection process are comprehensive K twelve music curriculum alignment, high school student participation rates in curricular and extracurricular music activities, professional development support for music facility, or excuse me, faculty, community partnerships, and performance opportunities, and consistent budget allocation for music programs across all grade levels. Tonight for your approval, we have superintendent bulletin items one through seventy-six, with addendum and read-in on items seventy-seven through ninety-six.
Are there any questions or comments on the superintendent's bulletin? Mr. DeVio?
Not quite on the bulletin, on your last thing, the, the award that we received about music. I was lucky enough last night to attend the Brooklyn Middle School Choral Concert with their orchestra and their strings, and it was, it was a very long evening, but it was very well, very well-attended and very, kids are very well-done. They really get improved a lot over these years. So, the moving up eighth graders were recognized by their, by their strings teacher, because those kids were the ones that were the, our first, third-grade strings, and we just started the springs program all those years ago. So, you know, we made sure to recognize them, and obviously now we're going to be seeing them in the high schools. So, as I say, it was a very well-attended event, and you could see the product of why we get that award, so, thank you.
Nice, thank you.
I was also there. We sat in the back and left early, because we knew it was going to be a long night. But the, hearing the sixth-grade orchestra play, I, I would have guessed it was at least a high school orchestra. They are doing a fantastic job there. So, that, that award is certainly well-deserved.
Absolutely.
All right, and now we're up to the secretary's report. Mrs. Tedesco?
Hi, everyone. On tonight's secretary's report, we have our reorganization motions for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, including the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six home-to-school transportation routes. Anybody have any questions?
Okay, we are up to new business. I know I have new business. Does anybody else? All right, so at the recent New Jersey School Boards Association meeting, as Mrs. Mayer said, they did some celebrations for board members who were awarded certificates and for time served, and we had four members receive awards at that meeting. We had Dr. Wright get a new board member certification. Mr. Barrios got a ten-year service on the board. Mrs. Mayer also has ten-year service on the board. And Mr. Trafal has fifteen years of service on the board. So, if you guys could all just come out to the middle, I'll give you your certificates, and we'll take a little picture and. At this time, we are at the hearing of the public. If there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern. State your name for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful if you would like to address the board, to please come up and sign in, so that you are ready when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, we are video recording this meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask that you not provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the town in which you live. If you are a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments, and are referred to by law one-six-eight for further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings. Is there anybody who would like to speak? I believe we have. Yeah, good. You can, at that lectern, there's a microphone, so that everybody can hear you in your shirt on the recording as well.
Hi, my name is Shujana Praveen, and I'm a junior at Parsippany High School. I'm working on my Girl Scouts Gold Award project to bring awareness to our community about the importance of road safety. As I'm sure many of you know, our town lost the life of a young eight-year-old boy last summer after being hit by a car while riding his bicycle. This was a heartbreaking incident that hurt many, and I wanted to ensure this pain had meaning by dedicating my project to teaching our young students about how to stay safe on the road. On top of educating our youth, I wanted to bring this recurring safety issue on Littleton Road to our town council by bringing change within our community, ensuring no similar accident happens again. I have already spread the word in my own school by working with my principal and project advisor, sent it out to our student body, and within a short time, it has gained much attention and support. Today, I would like to request you as our Board of Education to further support me and my project by granting permission to send the petition to all Parsippany schools, their students, parents, and staff. I have also discussed my project and petition with Dr. Sutter, and after working with him and going on the podcast with him, he has expressed his support and recommendation of spreading my petition throughout the district. So, with his advice, I came to speak with you all today. With your support, we can work together to maximize the signature count, to convince the town to decrease the speed limit on Littleton Road, and this starts with gathering support from our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, and yes, we did speak with Dr. Sutter, so your information will be able to go out to all the schools. So, thank you very much for this, for giving us the information and for doing the gold award.
Hello. President Cogan, members of the board, did not plan on this, but after reading through some things, I thought of a question.
Can you just put your name? No, can you just speak your name, so that's on the record?
Yes, oh, sorry, Darlene Taylor.
Thank you.
I know we had some changes to the budget, and one of those changes that came up at our PTA meeting at Rockaway Meadow was the cost for field trip transportation, being that won't be provided. Do we have an idea of what that cost will relate to for the schools next year, since we have to prepare our budgets over the summer?
You can ask all your questions, and then at the end, if we can answer them, we win.
That's my only question.
Okay, so, once the close, once the public session is done, we will try to answer your question.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mahmoud Hassan Omar, and I'm an exchange student from Zanzibar, Tanzania. I'm currently studying at Parsippany Hills High School as junior. So, today, I just want to say thank you to Parsippany Hills High School for welcoming me and being a place where I could grow, grow, learn, and discover a new side of myself. Being part of your community was privileged. I want to say thank you to teachers, my school counselor, my classmates, and all other school staff. Thank you for showing me what school spirit, kindness, and curiosity looks like. I will never forget the experience. From classes to sports, to sports, like I did wrestling, cross-country, and track, track and field for my first time, also to prom, homecoming, school concerts, and pep rallies. That shaped my exchange year in the best possible ways. I also want to hand over this U S, USA Medallion, Medallion School to Parsippany Hills.
Good evening to the board members and everyone here this evening, superintendent. I am Marilyn Crawford. I also live in the town, and I'm the host parent. My family made a decision to host a student internationally, and we accepted Mahmoud into our home in August of two thousand twenty-four. When he arrived here, we were overly excited. But before that process, we kind of started and got excited and signed up and found out we were approved to accepting international student. And currently, the A F S program is a program that hosts or accepts students sending and receiving from forty different countries. You have an opportunity to really kind of select, and you go through the profiles of each student and kind of see how they fit into your home, personalities, some of their activities, involvement extracurricular, what their family life is like at home, and how they kind of fit into your home. So, we had already made a selection, and we were so excited. We were on board, and the A F S representative said, wait, but did you find out if your school district is participating? And I was like, oh, my God, you gotta be kidding me. Please tell me they are. Because she said, well, I know Randolph does not, but you need to call. So, it was, of course, it was a Friday evening, and I had to wait until Monday. So, I just really hoped and prayed, and things worked out when I got the yes, and I think it was someone here who I spoke to over the phone. So, I was really excited when I called and received that word. But from the moment that I called, and the first representative from the district who I spoke with, from that moment up until like the entire process and time that he's been here, Parsippany has really delivered. This district has really thoroughly impressed me, and I think that I have a freshman high school student who applied to, he attends the Hill, I'm sorry, Morris School of Technology. And after observing Moody's experience, I kind of second-guessed. I know they might, you know, be looking at this video at some point, and I'm okay with that, because what I've observed from the Hills has really truly been impressive in terms of like what's offered at the school, not just programs, academics, and just the support that was really extended to Mahmoud, because certainly now he's a part of our family. And when I tell you staff really advocated for him, and just from student ambassadors from the first day of school to kind of make sure he's acclimated, and just encouragement I received when I said, oh, he may need to do some ESL, and they said, no, we think we got this. I think he'll be fine. Let him kind of go through his regular mainstream courses. And I'm so glad that I was encouraged from someone in the district who said, I think he can do this, and he did. And he's grown so much, and we really appreciate it. And so, in addition to the medallion, we also wanted to present the United States Department of State, the Certificate of Appreciation presented to Parsippany Hills High School for promoting mutual understanding and respect among future generations of global leaders by supporting the U S Department of State, Congress Buttigieg Youth Exchange, Future Leaders Exchange, and Kennedy Laguardia Youth Exchange and Study Programs, A F S Intercultural Programs, U S Medallion Schools, Department of State's twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, presented to Parsippany Hills High School and to the board.
Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak? All right, seeing done. Dr. Sutter, would you like to respond?
Yes, yes, I would like to thank you, Ms. Crawford, for the kind words that you provided to the board. We try very hard in this district to make everybody feel at home and to provide the best education possible. It really is a wonderful place, and Mahmoud just made it that much better. I had an opportunity to talk to him earlier, and he's a lovely young man. We're going to miss him, but we hope that, you know, what he learned here, he'll carry back and, and pay it forward. And that's, that's what we want here. We want to thank also, you know, Trugina for, for, for all her hard work and for what you've done to, to help the community as well. Your parents obviously raised one heck of a young lady, and we're happy to have you in school, too. And we want to thank your troop leader for all that you've done, too. You know, it's great. Darlene, I don't really, I don't have an answer for you, because I don't know what trips they're, they're going on. We don't have a price for that yet, so I really can't give you an honest answer on that. Unless we, we get the cost of the, of the trip, we wouldn't be able to tell you what that would be. Okay? But we'll, if you check in with us, we can, we can try to find out what trips you're actually going on and the price that that would be. All right? Thank you.
So, it isn't a set price per student anymore? It's based on the actual trips now?
It was going to be. We haven't had like the nitty-gritty talks about it yet, so I don't want to say that it's one or the other. It depends on how many trips we're, we're dealing with, and how many students are going, and what the costs of the trips are for the Transportation Department, really, at this point.
Sorry, I was a PTA treasurer for many years. I know, you've got to get that budget done, so I completely understand.
As soon as we can.
All right, so we are now up to superintendent bulletin number nineteen, items number one through seventy-six, with addendum items seventy-seven through ninety-six and read-ins. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Wright, in a second, with Mrs. Chappelle. Roll call, please. Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
I need to recuse on number two, number eighteen, number twenty-three, number eighty-nine, and ID number one oh one six three on the bill list. Yes to everything else.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Rea?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Trafal?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan? I need to recuse on thirty-nine and seventy-seven, and yes to everything else.
Thank you.
All right, I now need a motion to go into executive session. Action for negotiations, action will not be taken at the conclusion of the executive session. Can I have a motion for that, please? Mr. Trafal, second. Mr. DeVito. All in favor?
Aye.